Aloha, everybody. Mahalo for joining us tonight. Huli PAC was birthed from a shared drive to work our system by seeking Ina-based equity-focused leadership for our Hawaii Island community. Now more than ever, we need leaders who are willing to circle back to our roots and instill real change in our community from Kona to Ka'au to Hilo to Havi. The time is now to huli the system. Conducting our interviews tonight are Phil Barnes and Leah Goker. And I'd like to welcome Councilmember Matt Kana Alii Kleinfelder from Council District 5. Matt, why don't you take a couple of minutes to introduce yourself?
Mahalo, Jeff, and mahalo everyone for having me tonight. My name is Matt Kana Alii Kleinfelder. This is my second term and hopefully going towards my third term for the Hawaii County Council. I represent District 5 on Hawaii Island, which is, I mean, it's the Upper Puna. It's shifting, the lines are shifting this year, but right now we're looking at basically Ina Loa, orchid land, Hawaiian acres, fern acres, fern forests. Everything over to staying back from Ka'au. And it's been, it's been a wild ride as a council member and learning and just coming to grasp what politics looks like, what being a council member is, as well as being a small business owner, journeyman electrician, father of three. You know, it's just been, it's just been a lot of fun and you got a great panel tonight. So just look forward to letting everyone know a little bit about who I am and what I bring to the table and also hoping to answer some really good questions tonight. Hope you don't stick me with some hard ones.
Thank you. Phil, our first question?
I think that Lay is gonna take the first question.
Okay, sorry about that.
Okay, so we're gonna start off with some personal values. So first of all, I would like to know, what have you advocated for your, for your community and what community projects have you been working on?
Okay, well, sustainability is a big one, you know. At home, we do, and we are working on developing a farm around our property and really pushing sustainability here at our kind of on a level. We own a small business and as I mentioned before, that's something we've been driving towards and really wrapping my head around what that looks like as far as being a business owner and, you know, what that means for the community as a whole. The Pohola Farmers Market is something that I got going with the help of Atematic Green. There's been a lot of just, you know, smaller projects to sort of make sure that we're taking care of parks, that we're taking care of our community. And, and being present in the community, but also being aware of our larger issues and, I mean, even, you know, being on Mauna Kea during the last couple of years, last few years, and just trying to be a strong member of our council and supporting our community.
Mahalo.
Phil?
Hey, aloha, Matt. It's been a while. Yeah, gonna kind of building statement with the values issue. What has inspired you in particular to run for another term? And what are you, what would you say your core values are that will enable you to reach a fruition of what you're wanting to do in your next term?
Well, my, my kids are Kanakamali. And so my drive is my children and my family, my drive is our community and, and has been since the beginning. And so when I'm, when I'm looking at decision-making, when I'm looking at legislation, it really just is encompassing what's the best thing that I can do in my limited time in the council to help our community. That's really what it comes down to for me. Core values, I, I love it here. We have the most beautiful home and the most beautiful people and we have the opportunity to be what I think is a shining example of what it means to be sustainable to what it is to be culturally kind of this melting pot, this beautiful melting pot that we have. But supporting that melting pot and making sure that we are making decisions now that benefit our keke as we look towards our future. And that, I think, seems to evade a lot of our decision-makers is, you know, this looks good, this is helpful for certain aspects of our community. But in reality, a lot of the decisions that are made are not future-minded. They may be framed as being future-minded. But when you look at it as a whole and you look at, you know, whether it's a development coming up or land use decision, is that really good for our kids? Are our kids benefiting from this decision? Am I, as a council member, in eight years, and my kid's gonna ask me, "Dad, why did you make that decision? Why did you say yes to that? Your name is right there. You said yes to this vote." So I want to know that when I'm done and I've had my, my limited term as a councilperson to effect some change in our world that I can look back and say, "I did the best I could do. I did the best I could do for our kids." And I'm gonna continue on doing that, you know, if given the opportunity. But I want, you know, I just want our kids to be proud of what was accomplished during, you know, my time on the council. And that, and that really kind of defines my core values. It defines who I am. And it, I think it allows people to understand, you know, that's, that's the mind frame that I make decisions from.
Okay, thank you.
Your next question from Leah.
Okay, I can, I will jump down to here. And what do you see as the three most pressing issues facing your district?
Over the last, I mean, okay, we just came out of COVID and Puna, I'm gonna say Puna and somebody will argue me as mountain view. It's Ka'au, it's not Puna, but you know, at, at an overall level, a real high level, we're all Puna. And so for Puna, we've seen a massive movement of people and folks buying homes. And it's just, has driven the market up. I'm getting, I got calls today about property taxes and how, why, you know, why did the council change my rates? No rates changed, but the valuation went so high that even the Japanese Chamber of Commerce, in an email I saw today, was saying, "This is almost injurious to our folks in the business community." That's how much the property taxes have been raised. So that, that in itself, right there, is a huge issue, is that local people can't even afford to live here anymore. You know, what are we supposed to be for our kids if we, if they can't even afford to buy an empty piece of property that has no infrastructure at all, like most of the homes in Puna? The other thing that's happening too is with this inundation of people buying homes is our infrastructure, our roads, our water, our sewage systems, I mean, which doesn't actually exist in Puna, because we don't have sewer. But they're all being inundated with this growth in population. And we can see that on Puna, have a stretch in the morning and in the afternoon. We can see that on the roadways that the county has almost a 30-year period between, if we fix mile A today, we fix mile A in 30 years from now. That's kind of our breakdown. We hoped it 25 miles a day of paving or resurfacing. In that, in that, I think there's a thousand or 1,300 miles of roadway owned by the county. If you do the math, it's about 30 years before we come back to point A, that, that will come back to point A again. So roads has been an issue, infrastructure is an issue, affordable housing is an issue. And then just the overall sustainability of, I mean, almost of everything. I mean, sustainability can be tied back to your kids, can be tied back to jobs in the future, it can be tied back to growing your own food in your backyard. We are not sustainable at all. We buy everything from the mainland. It's all shipped in. Almost every single agricultural product that we buy comes in from out of state. Our shipping prices are out of control and just across the board, we scream sustainability and I, and I hear it all the time. Resilient, sustainable, but in reality, we are completely so far away from that that it's disturbing. So we need better infrastructure for Puna. It's very simple. We need more roadways, we need more access, we need more frequent paving. Sorry, DPW. We also need more affordable housing options for our kids. We need to ensure that the way we tax is in alignment with taking care of our children, that they can actually afford land in the end. And we need to make sure that we are sustainable as a, you know, as a people. And whether it's recycling, whether it's, I mean, I started recycling like glassware, aluminum cans, steel cans, plastic. We don't even offer that as a county right now. These are all things that we should be doing towards being sustainable. That, that's my big ones. That's my big three, you know, that I'm gonna be addressing. And if, if I wanted to pick one future project that I think could be great for Puna, Ka'au is in desperate need of a new fire station and a new police station. The roof is leaking on our fire station and the police station that we have is considered a substation. The fire station itself, sorry, the police station for Puna is actually the Pohola Station, which was never intended to be a central station. If officers respond to a call in Upper Puna or Volcano, then someone, the, the person being detained is gonna be taken back to Pohola. We have a limited amount of officers. That timeframe to get someone back from Volcano to Pohola is close to an hour. That takes away from our officer's ability to protect the people in our district. So having a central hub for fire police in Ka'au would be a huge step for our district as a whole.
Thank you. Back to Phil for our next question?
Yeah, so Matt, these next 10 questions are gonna deal with platform-focused areas that huli is pursuing. And the first one was already one of your big three, affordable housing. And so I'm gonna give you a chance to talk about that a little more. But the way I'm gonna phrase this is, what are the paradigm-shifting solutions that you can offer? Because the rising real estate market and home values do not correspondingly increase the cost of housing. And they're pushing it to a point where locals are totally priced out of the housing market. So what can we do to create affordable housing with this skyrocketing real estate market?
There's a lot of options on the table for affordable housing. We talk about affordable housing a lot. And if you look in Puna, if you were to build an affordable housing project, which you don't see a lot of in Puna, it'd be difficult. There's no, we don't have water in a lot of our areas. You know, a lot of our big open land is agricultural in nature. We already have these giant subdivisions that are unimproved, you know, Hawaiian acres, orchid land, fern acres. Thousands of people living without sewer access, though, water access. Some still waiting for connectivity to, you know, data, whatever that may be, whether it's cellular or broadband. So there's this kind of this, you know, Puna is difficult when it comes to affordable housing. We have the land, but not the infrastructure. So I, I've heard this kicked around before, would be infilling, you know, finding homes that are vacant. We have a lot of out-of-state or out-of-country, international people who own these properties, but they don't live there. They don't take care of them. People use their properties as dumping stations in the middle of the subdivisions. That's an option. We can look at doing infill, which I think could be neat. I really support what Habitat for Humanity does. I like their community builds. You know, they'll build out 10 homes within the same block and get local families to buy in and they all help participate in the build of the, the community itself. And on top of that, when they're done, it's building equity for those families. And that equity turns around and sustains the community for a long term. It's not just a quick in and out or, you know, a rental solution given some subsidy from the federal government. Beyond that, you know, I, I think what it's high time for is to look at the way we tax. Short-term vacation rentals, you have, you know, a lot, a lot of short-term vacation rentals, period. If we were to adjust our tax rates in just in time for a budget seizing and raise rates at certain classifications in our real property tax system and lessen rates for our homeowners, you know, our primary homeowners who just own one home, not, I own seven homes, that's not a primary homeowner. The people just have one home and they're gonna pass that on to their kids. If we can lessen that tax group and offer some really good exemptions there for them, beyond the primary home exemption, but just lessen that tax rate and up the tax rate at other levels, we could really bring some equity to the whole situation. That's something I'm kicking around and it's right in time for the budget season. I'm sure I'm not the only one thinking about that. And then beyond that too, I think I saw the timer. Is that, is that my time?
You got 30 seconds.
30 more seconds.
30 seconds, okay. I mean, on top of that, I think we should just limit the amount of short-term vacation rentals, period. It's killing us. They're just, they're all short-term vacation rentals, but we don't, like, like some of our panelists tonight, have a hard time finding houses. We see it across the district. And so if we ever limit that somehow, whether it's via taxation, whether it's just a straight cap. Maui Counties does some amazing things today. We could do some, some real good for our community, if you're in the, in the realm of affordable.
Thank you.
Thank you. Leah?
Hello. I'm gonna ask a question now on the next topic, which is native Hawaiian rights. And I'd like to know, how can we best forge a path forward towards restoration of occupied lands?
Well, that's an easy question. Easy question. That's a great question. I, I struggle with this a lot. And I'm, I've continued on a learning path with trying to understand the great mahale, statehood, public trust, doing the Native Hawaiian law classes with Kahuli'au and just trying to grasp what is very unique to Hawaii in land and water and the public trust and what's supposed to be done for the native Hawaiian community and what hasn't been done for the native Hawaiian community. And it's been very difficult. And a lot of it occurs at different levels within the state and the federal level and then at the county. And, um, my God, I, I almost, I don't know how to answer that question in full. I just know that from my end, I, I fully support anything that, that is being done to better the situation for native Hawaiians. We have 46,000 people on a waiting list to get a home. We have a tremendous amount of land. We may get $600 million from the state for the DHHL department. This is a beautiful time to look at taking thousands of people off that waiting list and putting them on properties and beginning to build equity in our community that hasn't been done in decades. And it's, it's been very frustrating as, as a parent of native Hawaiian children. My wife is on the list. She struggles with this. And it's just, to me, it's just the most backward situation where we have this right to do good for native Hawaiians and yet so little is done along the way. I, I look at places like South Kohala right now. I'm working closely with a development that's happening and trying to grasp how we can better this alcohol district who's been struggling with water rights. The Kohala, some of the members of, you know, the Kailapa community, the native Hawaiian homestead, they are paying about nine times the rate of county water that they should because they buy from Kohala Ranch. Supposed to be subsidized by DHHL, but they've been lessening that subsidy over the last few years. So you have a native Hawaiian community that is in a very arid district that is supposed to get water via public trust. I mean, that's part of the public trust. Native Hawaiian communities will be given water. Except we have yet to build the infrastructure to them, which is about a mile away to drop a water pipe from the county water supply into their community and detach them from Kohala, I was like Kohala Ranch Water Company. But it hasn't been done and this is going on for decades now. And it's, I mean, the, the way it was put to me is, look, we can't even put water in our gardens because we can't afford to water our gardens. That's how bad the pricing is, yet we have the public trust doctrine, which says it should be given to Hawaiian communities as a priority. But it doesn't. And so all that put together is very confusing to me and why it doesn't get done. At the county level, what I hear a lot is, it's not a county concern. It should be being done already at the state level. And it's hard for me because of, you know, you feel this innate need to do something, but you feel like you, you have to figure out that balance of where do you stand to fix it? Are we state? Is it federal? Is it a county issue? How can I help? But God, am I willing to help make that better?
Mahalo. Phil Barnes?
Okay, yeah, our next topic is land use and development. And this question will be particularly pertinent to someone in Puna. Do you support the rezoning of agricultural lands to residential or commercial lands and why and how?
Uh, you know, I guess it would come down to the specifics. Where is it? Where is it located? What's going on around that property? If it was, you know, properties along the highway, then you're gonna move towards being zoned commercially or residentially? Okay, if you're in an area where, you know, like some of our larger subdivisions where they haven't hit, I think a need to be zoned residential as agricultural in nature, then it should be left alone. That, those zoning changes really open up allowances down the line. They can do good, they can do bad. And for the most part, Puna is almost entirely zoned agriculturally right now. And that's both state and county level. And so with both of those, it, it doesn't hold us back. And it keeps us very well kind of secured in that agricultural means. And I, I think that there's gonna be instances where you're gonna wanna see those zonings changed. But I, I wouldn't say we're screaming to be changed, you know. And I don't know if I'm answering your question quite right. Overall, I'd say, right now, I feel that it fits the nature of Puna. We're agricultural in nature. A lot of our subdivisions fit that scheme. As we go down the line, it may be good. It may be that we open up opportunities for communities to say, if we can change us to urban, which you can still do agricultural, but you're, but you can open up opportunities there to be more urban, maybe provide different funding sources for the community. That could be an option. For the most part, when I've looked at doing improvements in communities like Hawaiian Acres, trying to do a road improvement district, a lot of people don't want the improvements. They like it just the way it is. That's why they bought there. That's why they live there. So there's really this, this kind of interesting balance that I found where the community wants improvements made. They want what's offered in communities in Hilo, which can be residential or urban. They want to see more commercialability. They wanna know they can get jobs closer to home. But at the same time, when you say, "I'm gonna develop the street in front of your house and make it into a nice two-lane street that's paved," all of a sudden that changes. They don't want that change anymore. So it's been really interesting watching this balance of the, the folks who live in Puna don't necessarily want it changed. But as you see more influx of Malahinians in our community, they wanna see what they saw where they came from. Nice two-lane communities, little strip malls, make it more comfortable. So this is really interesting kind of situation that we're looking at. And, and you know, people say a lot of time paradigm shift, but we're kind of in the middle of this, this interesting shift of, you know, where are we headed as a district? And as a culture and as a community, you know, what, what's that gonna look like in the future? It's, it's, it was really confusing to me when I first got kinda blindsided when I say, "Hey, this is gonna be good." And I got, I just got railed by people said, "You are gonna ruin my neighborhood if you improve my roads." But I have folks saying, "I have to drive to meet the ambulance when my husband had a heart attack." Trying to find the balance there is really difficult. You know, there's, there's no cut and clear answer. And I don't know if that helps. It's a great question. It's a really good question as we go forward.
Thank you. Leah, your next question?
This next question is on the topic of a diversified and circular economy. So tourism seemingly will continue on our shores regardless of its impacts. How can we ensure that the tourism industry is of service to our working families rather than the other way around?
A easy answer is build in community to those discussions. Tourism needs to revolve around community, not, not we revolve around it. The planning, the research and development department has a free system of ideas who's been working on a tourism management plan. That plan is, is being built really to understand what the community wants out of tourism, not just, "We're here to support the industry. This is what we wanna see the industry do for us." Places like Ke'aukaha, I mean, we're really, really pushing to better utilize the tour companies to understand what their needs are as a community, what their understanding is of the place they're taking people to visit. So it's not just, "Oh, I went and took pictures of this beautiful beach. It's, this beach was this and this is the history behind it." This is why it's important to the people who live there and they take care of it. And not only that, I participated in a beach cleanup there and was able to plant native plants along the coastline to stop erosion. Now you have a, a tourism model that is, has changed from just come take pictures, steal our sand, put it in bags and try and go home to, I went there, I understand more now about the culture and the people and the place that I visited. And I am invested in what I learned. I'm, I am understanding of that place more so than I ever was. And I bring that home to my family and I explain it to them. I explain it to my neighbors that, hey, this, it's not just Hawaii. It's a beautiful place and this is the specific area we went to and this is what we did and we helped to make it better. That kind of tourism model, that's beautiful. More so than just come drink Mai Tais on the beach, sit by the pool, throw your garbage and your plastic cups in the garbage and away it goes. And what a beautiful place. That's, that model has gotta shift. And it's, unfortunately, it's been the go-to model for the last 60 years, you know, it's been sold that way. But I really, really think that the community, I know that our county is working on it, but I think the community is, is over, over it and ready to see some, some real strong change. So their first of five circular economy, I mean, change the tourism model, that's a big one. Incorporate, I think, learning experience into tourism models so that they come, they learn. Incorporate, you know, whether it's tree planting, you know, you come here, you plant trees. A lot of people are doing this, this models of tourism that really involve them in where they are, not just as a perspective of an outsider, but being involved in making it better. I think that, that is beautiful. On the backend, I mean, just for instance, we have the development in Kona that we're working on right now. We're working on ordinance for them for the 1,100 timeshares. That's, that's a huge impact on our community in South Kohala. And I, and I may use this over and over tonight, but it's, it's pretty big. 1,100 timeshare units in Kona, South Kohala District, it's gonna have a big effect on our aquifer in the Waimea District. It's gonna have a big effect on everything. One interesting thing they've done is they said that we're gonna be net zero on our water usage. We're gonna use water. We will not use potable water for the new development for our irrigation, for our property. We are gonna take our wastewater, we're gonna treat it, and we're gonna use our R1 water to put back into the irrigation to, to use that water instead of potable water for our build. Now that, that's a very interesting take and a different, and a switch that you're not gonna see a lot. This is new. And this is kind of where we're at right now with, in our understanding and our available technologies, we can do this kind of thing. We can put that in an ordinance, in a zoning ordinance and say, "You guys will do this going forward." That really kind of sets a new bar for our communities. It's not just, "Yeah, we'll deal with your impact. You win." It's, this is what we want. This is what the community wants. This is what we wanna see. And we need funding here, 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 here. And we wanna see you guys do this with your water. Those, those kind of decisions can be made at the county council level. And I'm happy to say I'm part of those decisions that are being made. And, you know, and having developers achieve a new level of understanding for a community is key as well. But just to go back, you know, diversified circular economy, I think we're getting there. It's not perfect, but we're definitely on track right now to, to hit that level for, for you, for your question.
Mahalo. Phil Barnes?
Yeah, our next up platform area is food security and agriculture. So what is your definition of food security or food sovereignty for Hawaii? What and how would you implement programs to fulfill your definition in your next term in office?
I think it's important to note that pre-contact, the native Hawaiians here were completely self-dependent. And there was about a million and a half people who lived here. And they didn't bring anything in and they were able to take care of their entire population. And I don't think that there was even really a high level of sickness in the community. Everyone was well-fed and there is a very strong structure to the community. That's an important note. Just to start with, I think, as a base level. Just to start with, I think is a base level. Now we're completely dependent on shipping. We are, I think, uh, from what I remember, we're more than seventy percent reliant on what comes in from the boats. And it may be closer to ninety percent at this point. So. Food, you know, food resiliency, you know, and there's so many little keywords everyone kicks around, you know, resiliency, sustainability. And I think what it just comes down to is, and it's, it's funny that we need to go back and understand and strengthen. What we knew before. And reinforce those models and start to become food independent. Um, and, and, and it may sound cliche, but I mean, in reality. Whether you've got a quarter acre or you got ten acres or fifty acres, if you could just, if every person could just grow their own. Base plants with this kalo, whether it's banana, whether, whether it's tomatoes, if you could just do that. That one simple step, learn how to compost. Buy in bulk, you know, do the little things that we all can do. We could really make a dent in our food dependence on outside sources. Coming from a solar background, you know, it's, you can go, you can go that way with energy too. Now we can do a lot, you know, it's, it's out there. But I mean, just a simple, a simple ten by ten garden, I think, would take care of most people's. Needs in a, in our, in our family. I mean, I've seen my, my, my sister-in-law and her husband take their half acre lot in Hilo. And they've turned it into a small nursery, basically with kalo, with myo, with, uh, mya, mya, banana. Um, kukui nuts with starfruit, mango, tangerines. I mean, everything. They got this beautiful little farm going on a half acre of land. Uh, here at our property, we raise bees. We are in process of planting trees. Um, we do what we can to raise our own food, albeit we're a little bit busy. Overall, the model for us is we want to be able to do a more of a farm to table with our own business, you know, grow our own lilac for our lilac butter. Grow guava. Um, on that note, help the little businesses who have been trying to get. Uh, projects like, uh, what is that called? It's a certain type of juicing. Uh, it's escaping right now, but they, they want to take fruit from the island and they want to process it. And do, uh, purees with it that are shelf-stable room temperature and then be able to give that back to local. Companies that need it versus us needing to bring it in from outside sources. All those little things, they're out there. I mean, even people call all the time and they say, we've got pigs. Unless that pig has got a USDA, USDA stamp on it, you can't use it in a restaurant. So there's some very simple changes at the state levels that we could address too. Can we use those pigs for dog food? Could we use them? Can we get more USDA qualified technicians to come and stamp more of our food so we can use it? Now we can eradicate pigs and provide a food source? Can we do dog food, cat food? Can we stop bringing it in for the male? I mean, there's so many options that are neat. It's like we've just been sitting on it. Kind of in limbo where everything's cheap and affordable and it's just the way that we've always done it. But I think we really got to make some changes and we have some great people in the senate right now. I think Laura Costa is doing an amazing job. Um, with some good local legislation, state legislation and using, I think, what it comes down to is listening to our community. Who really tend to have the most brilliant ideas, use those ideas, put them into effect and kind of make those common sense approaches that help us. Become more food independent. Um, I think very basic, very attainable, very easy to do. I'm trying on my level. If we all tried, if everyone here on this phone call tried and everyone listening to this tried, I mean, we can make a dent. We can make a dent.
Thank you. Next question from Leah.
Um, okay. I'm going to ask about our water and waste issues here on this island. Um, so how do you feel about public-private partnerships to address our water issues, both for solid waste and water?
I think that they have, um, kind of a proven track record. They can work. Government tends to be very expensive. I've seen some projects in Oahu. Uh, where they've taken gas with a case, they've taken the methane coming off of their. Sewage and they've been able to convert it into a usable methane and pump it back into their propane system. Those kind of technologies exist and it's not always a government entity that needs to do it. Sometimes a private entity can do it better and more efficiently. Uh, water, you know, the same level. I think our county water supply department, they do a good job. Um. Could it be done better by a third party possibly? You know, public-private partnerships do have an ability to work. I guess it depends on where you're going with that. What, what exactly they're doing. I, I think, I think government roles sometimes needs to be lessened to an extent. And, and use government for what is needed to do rather than burdening it with, here's everything, you take care of it. Some things can be done better by private entities and, you know, we've seen that again and again and again. Um, sewage is interesting, you know, in Puna, it's, Puna is, we don't have sewage. We don't have, we don't have a sewage system. And I know we're studying it. We put aside funding for a study. I don't know that we'll see sewer systems in our lifetime for Puna. I really don't. It's an interesting idea. But the sewer system in Hilo is failing and that services a lot of our, our folks in our community in Hilo. So. I mean, look at our track record and where it stands right now. It's not being done. In the best manner, the, the, I mean, it's falling apart. We have a lot of sewage spills. Could a third party step in and take care of it? And provide other alternatives along the way? I think so. I think that they could.
Thank you. Phil?
Uh, yeah, the next issue is climate change mitigation and adaptation. This is a biggie, obviously. Uh, leading scientists have agreed that the year twenty thirty. We must have a reduction in, of greenhouse gas emissions by fifty percent. In order for civilization as we know it to have any chance to continue. While humanity continues to face age-old problems stemming from inequality and injustice. Climate change is different from every other issue. In that it poses an actual known deadline. Does year twenty thirty have any significance for you and what can be done?
It seems like every time we hear about, I mean, from the first time it was brought up, it was ridiculed. Yeah, it's just some scientist with a crazy idea. Reality is it's happening faster than we can keep up with. Uh, so for me, I, I think twenty thirty. I think that's a very acceptable deadline for when we're going to see some real impacts of. Uh, climate change. I, I listened to a discussion, uh, some very smart members of the community, much smarter than myself. Uh, I forget his name exactly, but he basically said, you know, across the world, because of the way the world is shaped around. But as it spins in space, it actually bows out a little bit. So what we're going to see as we see climate change and global warming is the ice caps melt. The water will actually come out to the midpoint. More so than the higher altitudes, the higher, um. However, that's called latitude, longitude. But point being. We're going to see more inundation here sea level wise than anybody else. The, the mid-range, the equatorial regions are going to see a lot more inundation by sea level. And then it was due to that bubbling of the earth, that kind of squashing of the earth. Very interesting point. And I say that because I think, um, everyone is pointing towards, you know, we got fifty years, we got a hundred years to figure this out. Everything that I've seen, even just recently in the news, they said that this is the hottest day they've ever seen in the Antarctic. It was seventy degrees above normal, what they've ever seen before. That is staggering and that kind of shows you that, you know, we may think as humans that we're incredibly brilliant and that we understand how everything works. And I don't think that we really do. It's happening right now and we have exacerbated the problem. And, um. If we don't make some major changes, it's gonna, I don't think, it's just going to keep on at this nice steady level. I think it's going to go. Boop, 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 gone. And it's exponential. And so twenty thirty, you know, that, that could be a very. A real deadline for when we see some major worldwide flooding. And I don't know that people quite understand what that means. You know, what climate change is going to mean to them, but when you have levels, you say, we have areas, uh, let's say like. Corner, Hilo, Oahu. Where you have a, a large base of population that's sitting at sea level now. Or three feet above sea level. And we're looking at, I think what they told me was by twenty thirty, twenty fifty, this is our guess that we'd see. Five to seven foot rise in sea level, but when you have a storm, that's when it gets bad. When you actually see. Seven to fifteen feet of rise and a king tide, you saw it all together, perfect storm. Then you have a large areas of land underwater and that, what that looks like in other areas, you know, not just in Hawaii, but. Areas that have always been kind of at risk, Bay Area, California, um, Louisiana, Florida. Massive amounts of population where we also know a lot of our shipping comes through. And when we see our ports, which are built at the water level, go underwater. And we're completely dependent on boats to come in and bring us everything. Uh, we're kind of in bad shape, you know, honestly. So that brings you right back to being more food dependent, more energy independent, more. Solar dependent. Sorry, but tie back to my ten years doing solar, you know, climate change. I, I think we, we all need to be making some serious adjustments to what we do, whether it's. How long you leave the lights on in your house to being, you know, looking at buying a solar system. You know, driving an electric vehicle, making those decisions that. Are, are not so much, you know, a good thing to do. It become, this is going to be necessary for us to do as a species if we hope to maintain our way of life. But that's where I stand on that, you know, it's not the most, it's not, it's not a good outlook. I really don't think we're in a good space right now. And the, the last two years during COVID was really interesting because airline travel slowed immensely. People stopped traveling. We didn't go as many places in our cars. We limited our gasoline usage. I think people really kind of, it took a step back, even maps that showed. Pollution levels in really industrial areas showed a lessening of the pollution and. That was an interesting way for us to kind of look at what we could do if we really limited our impact on our environment. And a really, really interesting opportunity in the middle of all that COVID, but. Really interesting opportunity to see how we affect our environment really clearly.
Have time for one more question. Leah?
Okay. Um, the last question that I have is about social issues here in our community. Um, here in Puna Makai, I know we're on our third generation of an ice epidemic. What solutions would you propose to combat, to combat the drug addiction crisis? Particularly this methamphetamine epidemic?
I mean, I think one, one immediate answer is to really, you know, allow our police officers to beef up their ability to enforce laws within our community. That, that won't solve the problem, but at least we'd have, you know, more bodies able to respond to the issues as they arise. Um, two, I, I really think it boils down to where you started, which was a social. Problem and you have a lot of inequity right now. We have families struggling. You have kids who are kind of going to school. What's the outlook for them? You know, as they get older? We talked about tourism tonight and I, we had this discussion in council a month or so ago, you know, what are our kids looking forward to? What are they looking to in the future? Now you're just going to be another cog of, um, plumbers and, no, I mean, I, I come from the trade, so. I mean, just my, my kid's going to be an electrician. And help build hotels when they go up so that tourists can have a nice time when they come. Or are we trying to raise a more educated, more dependent, you know, group of Kiki right now? So socially, I think that this. This issue that arises, which is drug use in our community, really comes from. Not feeling like you have a real strong purpose, not sure what you're going to do with your life. Um, not sure if you, even if you mean something to your community or not. And as you look at that and you realize, hey, I'm just. I don't know what I'm doing here. I don't, I don't seem to have a place in all this. I'm, I've been consistently held down my entire life. And I never seemed to be right. Then what else are you going to do to yourself? You, you know, do something that's an immediate fix to your problem, which is most likely drugs. So we need to build that equity back up in our community. We need to show, you know, our kids as they're coming up. There's other things they can do with themselves. You are brilliant. You are amazing. This is a beautiful place that you live in. This is your land. And this is, there's ways of being dependent here. There's ways of being independent here. And there's ways for you to really have some buy-in and strengthen your community versus tear it apart on the backside. And I, I've seen it personally. Um, I, I just, I think that's, that's, that's a really big question. And then phrased in a small way, you know, of social injustice, but at the same time, it's, it's everything. It's, it's the last. Hundred years put on the backs of our kids and them, sorry, it's my dog. Them trying to figure out what they're going to be in life. And if we don't offer them opportunity. And suc- successful steps to get there. Then it's very easy to just fall off and go do something that's going to make you a quick buck or makes you happy, whatever it might be. But it is, it's a huge problem in our community and I think it stems back to us as parents, us as leaders. Um, us as a county, as, you know, people and just really, really strengthening our relationship at the Ohana level. But our Kiki, working within the school system and getting, getting back into their lives a lot. I know a lot of us. Separate out. We all have iPhones in front of us all the time. We're working, we're busy. But if we don't take care of our kids, I mean, I think we all run the risk of, I mean, maybe with him, even within my whole family, if I'm not taking care of my children. Cause I'm busy all the time and I'm not there for them. That could be my kids. And so. Big issue. I, I think Puna, we see, we see more so than other districts. And we're more low income and we're, a lot of families working two or three jobs here. And we don't have a lot of time as, as a culture, uh, uh, humanity-wise, we all, we all seem very, very busy in our lives, but. There's a huge amount of effort that needs to go into raising our Kiki, right? And if we do that, I think we can start to step out of that. System we kind of been stuck in for a long time. There's a big shift. I swear, there's a big shift coming right now. This is going to be amazing.
Okay. A big mahalo to council member Matt Kana Elii Kleinfelder for joining us this evening. Thank you to both our interviewers. Phil Barnes and Leah Goker. At Huli PAC, we're building something that, uh, the political establishment has never seen before. A slate of Pono candidates and, um, your donation can help Huli the system. So, uh, if you'd like to donate something, please visit our website. Hulihi.com, H U L I H I dot com. Thanks again for everybody for joining us and, uh, good luck in your campaign, council member.
All of you guys, appreciate it very much. Thank you for the opportunity and, uh, you guys do a tremendous job and good luck with, uh, Huli. Thank you for having me tonight.